We can all stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A moment of silence for the men and women in the armed forces, our first responders, our veterans, those fighting the good fight in the Ukraine, and those that have lost their lives in the Middle East war and crisis. Thank you.
Here, here. Any, Stephanie, any public participation?
Michael Semilla.
All right, next to now, 111 Willow Springs, so I'm just here to talk about the setup for tonight, and for the folks watching at home, just getting information that's relevant to watching this either now live or after the fact. So I tried my best to give everybody a microphone, or at least a microphone for every seat. I'm going to single out, Don Gregorio and Pete Helmuths here for a brief moment. They're sharing the mic, it's set up for you guys to just rotate if you need to share it. I see some folks are also sharing their microphones, so please do make use of those because we are broadcasting live on YouTube and Facebook, The Town's YouTube and Facebook page. Once these videos go live, they are there in perpetuity and do create something of a permanent record. And so that's why I ask that folks use these microphones to the best of their ability. The reason we have so many here is because that's what it takes for it to be audible, to be understandable after the fact at home, and for folks watching at home as well. So I apologize if not everybody has a microphone. I will shift camera two, right there, over to this table here, so that we have a camera for each table momentarily, and I'm moving this microphone away from the podium, so if anyone needs to speak, everyone who's seated has something to work with. Mayor's going to be using a wireless lab microphone, and so is Dr. Parlato, thank you guys for volunteering for that. There are two shotgun microphones in the room, so if there's somebody else that just simply can't get picked up, we'll hopefully be able to use those. So like I said, we are on Facebook and YouTube, both of those are permanent. For those who want to watch us after the fact, the easiest place to find it is on The Town's YouTube channel. All you have to do is go to YouTube, type in "Town of Millford." At the top would be the channel, The Town of Millford's channel, and the very first video underneath that, almost every week, will be the most recent video. And if you can't, if that's not the case, click on the channel, it'll bring you right to The Town's videos. If you click on "Live," the last tab, it'll bring you to all the live videos. Everything that is a meeting of the Town Council is under the playlist for Town Council meetings. That's true of the budget rec, the budget hearings, we've got everything set up like that, so you can easily find everything for the sake of posterity. That should pretty much cover it. And that's it, thanks.
Thanks, buddy. Okay, next, we're going to go to, before we go, to number three, just for housekeeping and those that are watching tonight. Some people may watch, and I know who we are, so Oliver, we'll start with you, if you could just state your name and the board that you're on.
Start with me.
Yep.
Olga Rela, Board of Ed. Sarah Herring, Board of Education.
Jennifer Lato, Superintendent of Schools.
Wendy Follonback, Board of Education.
Mrs. Saris, Board of Ed.
Alex Thomas, Town Council.
Tom O'Brien, Board of Education.
Brian McCauley, Board of Education.
Hillary Ram, Town Council.
Paul Murphy, Town Council.
Thomas Pizzito, Town Council.
Chris Cosgrove, Town Council.
Eric Hansel, Board of Education.
Mary Jane Lundgren, Town Council.
Katie Francis, Town Council.
Pete Bass, Mayor.
Walter O'Connor, Board of Finance.
Walter Baer, Board of Finance.
Barbara Wolf, Board of Finance.
Joe Triano, Board of Finance.
Diane Clay, Board of Finance.
Pete Helmuth, Board of Education.
Joseph D Gregorio, Board of Finance.
Thank you, everybody. Next, we're going to...
You have Sal.
Oh, Sal.
Sal, we're in Town Council. I sit at the table, in a second. Sal, there's no charge for not sitting. Thank you, but I'm about to clarify that. Come on, Sal.
Thank you, Sal. All right, thanks for the... Chira. Grazie. Fanta grazie. How's that? Next, we're going to ask for open comments. Chairwoman Follonback, on the Board of Ed.
Oh, okay, I didn't realize. Basically, the Board of Education is here this evening, and thank you for all the volunteers, all of us coming out this evening, to expand upon conversations that have transpired and to formalize a procedure in which we can drill down and be part of the discussion of initiatives and procedures in which may impact this town on a budgetary basis. And also, I also hope that we can review during that process, what we do do with the town, and what the town does with the Board of Education. We do a lot of great things in this town, and often, I think that that is not mentioned enough, and I think that that's really important. So I appreciate this opportunity to capture some of those discussions and bring forward something that we may be able to, if not, a few things that we can bring to the town to show that we really are trying to do the best that we can.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Walter. That's okay.
That's...
Board of Finance.
That's why I was quiet for a second, I didn't mean to take your spot.
I've worked and lived in this town for close to forty years now, and this is the first time that I can remember all three boards, the Council and the two boards, meeting together to try to come together to find some synergies in how the town is governed, how the Board of Ed is governed, and the ways of saving some taxpayer money. I view the role of the Board of Finance in this as to evaluate whether whatever synergies they propose actually makes financial sense. It's not a short-term penny thing, but works over the long term.
Thank you, Walter. And lastly, from the town side, working with, as Wendy had said before, collaboratively, we've already done some great things. The health insurance partnership, which is cost avoidance into millions, also purchasing supplies, whether they be printers or copiers, together, it's had a significant savings there. And then also working in tandem and looking at other opportunities that we will be looking at, both financially, as you talked about before, Walter, and also looking at partnering and ways to make a return on investment to our taxpayers and our residents manageable. As we all know, we're facing headwinds when it comes to the budget, the economy, so I think it's a great opportunity for all of us together to look at, as Walter said, first time, that we're doing this, and I think it's kind of historic, and I think other towns can look at this as well. An opportunity to work together, partner together, to see what synergies we can work collaboratively for. With that being said, Walter, who do we have next? We have the discussion of general town government and Board of Education and Board of Finance processes pertains to joint meetings. And I know we all, for the public, we all have our own processes. So the Board of Education has its process when it comes to agendas and how they do things. So to the Chairwoman Follonback, if you'd kind of, for the groups here that may not be familiar, how does your process work?
For the Board of Education meetings, like any town agency, basically, all of our meetings are warned. We have agendas, we have minutes, those are posted, and they're open to the public. With regards to this structure, I, it is, I was wondering, is it the intent to form an ad hoc and have individuals part of that, and a long-term committee in which we, obviously under FOIA, we have to have minutes, agendas, of the like. The Board of Education has a board policy regarding ad hoc committees, that one to three board members can serve on an ad hoc committee, and those board members can share that information back to the board, and they are selected by the board chair. However, I think that in this open forum, we can certainly see who'd like to be part of that process, and go from there. So that's how we do things.
Thank you. Walter?
Well, Wendy said a lot of things there that we also do on the Board of Finance, in terms of minutes and warning and the like. Basically, the Board of Finance meets monthly, oversees the finances of the town, we get reports monthly on the income expenditures and the like. We also review what the Town Council has passed, and we have a vote on passing that on. Of course, budgetary responsibilities, we'll meet usually each year, then we make our own final decision on what goes before the voters, usually in May. The other thing the Board of Finance does, it has representation on the pension committees here in town and define contributions, and also a representative on the union negotiations of the Board of Ed, and can pass us pretty much what we, what the Finance does.
Can I expand on that? That's a good point, I didn't realize, Mayor, that you're asking about the day-to-day procedures. We have standing committees, we have four, in which most educational districts have curriculum, policy, finance, and personnel, and facilities. Those subcommittees meet once a month, that information is reviewed, and recommendations are made to the full board, where the full board can take action on what became a subcommittee. As Walter had mentioned, we do have Board of Finance participation on certain negotiations. We also handle the negotiations on the board side. We have seven bargaining units in which we have a negotiation committee, and similar to, you know, the Board of Finance. And I apologize, I forgot that piece.
Thank you. To town side, we have our Town Council, Mayor Form of Government. Wendy, I hundred percent agree with you, I think moving forward, obviously, we have elections next week, so what would be the new bodies, I would think, would do exactly as you're saying, come up with some subgroups, subcommittees. Those subcommittees would meet as this full body prior to the next meeting with some kind of thoughts as to processes. What we would be looking at first, and how we would address those, and we could work at a couple of things in tandem. But I think, I would suggest that we would wait until the elections, and then decide the members that are serving would be the ones that would be put on these different committees. And I know, I would suggest that, obviously, the Board of Education would decide who theirs would be, Board of Finance, and the Town Council would decide who their representatives would be for really working at these subgroups, because I think that would make a lot of sense.
So you'd like to wait until our December meeting to have board elections and have those members selected at the December meeting?
That would be, that'd be great, but that would be up to the Board of Education itself to decide that.
Right.
But...
That's okay, it's just that we begin budget two weeks, three weeks after December, as everyone does. And one of the concerns over a time period is that, I think it, for me, it's fair to say that we've all wanted to do this. I don't think it's for lack of not really wanting to sit down and have these conversations and formulate, you know, what we can do as a team. It's difficult, in the middle of budget, to carve out some of this, but if this is a longstanding committee, and there's a timeframe, then that gives us some time for next budget cycle as well. Because financial impacts of this nature won't be ready for this January, in my opinion, and I think that they should be thorough and investigated with data, especially if we're dealing with any kind of bargaining issues. Those take time. So if we wait until December and have a board meeting, technically, we may not have individuals who come forward until after budget. So I just want to be clear about that, that there's not a concern of a timeframe there. We also can have up to three board members, that doesn't preclude any Board of Education member, they're all open to the public, by coming and listening to the conversation and being a part of that. I would hope that whatever the committees move forward, that we can have a conversation of what is required at each meeting, what data is required of, that can move the conversations along, and what narrative do we want to go through. So, and have a more arranged order of where we're going to look at, because we know that many years ago, some of us sat on this committee for town efficiencies, and we worked on it for almost a year, and submitted a report to the town, I was on that committee myself, of efficiencies, and it took some time to put forward, and we brought forward many aspects of town and board. So I'm hoping it could be something similar, but a little bit more drilled down as well, so that everyone is prepared with material in advance when they come to these meetings, and they can review them. So I'm hearing that you'd like us to wait until December?
Yes.
Okay. And is there a criteria for certain board members or council members, or anyone? How many people are you looking at from other boards and commissions? Because you don't, you don't have a number that you can have, you can have as many as you want. We can have three. Okay.
So we could discuss, we could do three, I mean, if that's the max you're doing, or we could do two?
What about one representative from Board of Ed, one from Finance, one from the Council, on a given committee to start? Those people then move out, they need help, they need information, they go to other people, so that the committees, subcommittees, whatever you want to call them, don't become unwieldy. You have to start somewhere.
You do.
And if you start with one voice from each group, see what comes out, because we don't want to predetermine what we think, you know, we have tried this in the past, right?
Right.
So we, because everybody will be busy with budget, my thinking, said this to Mayor, is just let's start with one from each point of view and see where it goes. Come up with a topic, and then break out into the smaller groups.
How would you break out into smaller groups if they're not on the committee?
One person from, huh?
How would you break out, for example?
That'd be the committee. Come up with the topics, you already gave four or five before. I mean, you don't want to just throw people together in a group.
No.
Right, so...
And you don't want too many, no disrespect, but that's the problem.
That's why I'm saying, is that I thought that three people might be a good starting point, and then you have many people you can reach out to, right? So if it was me, and you, and Walter Baer, right? Let's just say, there's one from each group. We talk about what we think is top three topics, let's say. The other groups, the other people, they do the same thing. We come together, we see what's salient and what's not. From there, you meet, I would then say, Mary Jane, you have a lot of expertise in this, Walter O'Connor has a lot of expertise, so each person can go. You don't want to weigh any particular committee with too many people from one group or another, right? You don't want to overdo it with Board of Finance, you don't want to overdo it with the Town Council. So I think we have to look at this just like if this was a company, and we had different departments, we are all different departments, but putting aside some of the things, like you said, you can only have three board members.
We can.
Just kind of forget that for a minute. This is a separate thing that we're doing, you know?
Before you formulate a full committee, is that what you're saying? Because we can only have, our bylaws don't allow us to have a full board or more than three. So that's what I'm asking.
On one committee.
On one ad hoc committee.
Yeah, so if we're going to do one person from each thing, you won't have any more. Start with that. Don't, you're already looking for a problem, there's not going to be a problem.
No, I'm not looking for a problem, I'm looking to...
Just let's start slowly and simply.
Let you know what our policy is.
No, that's good, okay.
So Wendy, the, if it's, is this a subgroup, or could you have, say, a subgroup looking at purchasing? Could you have another subgroup that looks at...
HR, IT.
Could you have different subgroups to stay under that threshold, or is it this big overarching thing, which would be three people?
The ad hoc committees allow up to three people to represent the Board of Education and come back and present the information to the Board of Education, request information, things of that nature.
Would one of them be, like Mayor just said, one be Finance, one be IT, so that that doesn't give you three on each one of those?
But are they representing the board, or will there be other people with them?
We're representing our whole group. I don't know that we're already going to start worrying about who's representing who, I think we're going to talk about ideas, aren't we?
All ideas, absolutely.
Yeah, so I don't think, I want to, I don't think I'm looking at it, or we should look at it as representing something, because that means you're working on something that already happened. I thought we were going to talk new stuff, like new ideas, right? So let's try that first, if it doesn't work out, Wendy, you know, we can always change, there's no...
So, that's fine, so you're...
I just, I'm throwing it out, I'm just one person, but I think that the, what I've heard is that there's a lot of what you already do, so this three-board member person, we don't have that, you don't have it on the Board of Finance, do you, Walter? Right, so, but I don't see you having...
That's a bylaw for an ad hoc committee.
Yeah, yeah, I got it, I got it.
And every entity is different.
But are you going to have all three of you on one thing, whereas I can see, if we had five topics, I can see five of you, one on each group? Wow.
You know, my concern, as, sorry, as, my concern about that is when you, if, I mean, and I know we're just throwing things out, but when you start talking about HR and IT, you're running into a lot of, you're running into a lot of state policies, you're running into, you're running into unfamiliar territory for, you know, just about everybody at this table, and legal territory, so I think it, you have to be very careful about how you go about things like that.
But just getting together, if you and I, and you're on one, and we get somebody from over there, we sat down to talk, what would prevent us from just discussing what we three see as things that might be combinable?
No, nothing, but I'm just saying...
Right, and then go to the HR people and say, well, are we right or wrong? Do we drop this and move elsewhere? That's the kind of thing I'm thinking, Brian, because if we all go into this with preconceived notions of what we've always done, we'll be right back to where we always are.
So, I like where you're at. I think that, like, having a committee, right, that is made up of however many people, right, I think three is a little bit problematic, because you're kind of ending up in the territory of a selection problem, right? How do you decide who it is that you select? Is that person representative of the group as a whole, or like, you know, one particular set of voices? I would probably say maybe two from each body, or something to that effect, you know? At least that way you kind of have more voices at the table, but I would focus an initial group on identifying specific areas of concern, right? Those areas of concern can then be brought to the bigger group, and then we can kind of decide, like, okay, we want to deal with HR, who has some expertise in HR, right? Maybe there's people here who have some sort of, you know, background in that, or facilities, or...
Or go find it, if you don't know.
Or, or, right, or they could say, okay, we have our area that we want to research, now we're going to go out and we're going to research, and we're going to locate experts on those topics, right?
Like other, other people have done it, other towns, that kind of stuff, right?
Research, right, research other towns, find a specialist, address an attorney, are these areas that we can, that we can do, and then they can report back to the group as a whole. And I think that that kind of is like, to me, that makes a little bit more sense. I would try to just keep it less pointed and more, let's identify some things and discuss, and see if these are even things that we want to pursue, right? Because I don't want to throw a whole bunch of good time and effort at a bad idea, or something that's going to become contentious. Let's try to, let's try to maintain the idea that it's going to be...
Pick the topics that we think need to be looked at, right?
So why don't, Joe's a great idea. Walter?
I was going to say, to me, this sounds like a two-step process. Have the first three people, whoever they are, one from each board, come up with a list of areas that they think we need to explore. At the same time, the people that aren't doing that, they would look at it, we would come back, for everybody to come together, see what is common ground among everybody, and then from there, go to the subcommittees to flesh it out and the like. And also, I think we need to definitely have the ability to have staff, you know, from the Board of Ed, let's say Janet, let's say someone from HR, your department, if we were talking about that, someone from IT, same thing on the town side. We have to be able to get those people with their expertise to look at.
Of course. We can't rewrite, but first decide what we think in common is...
Once everybody starts to, so that everybody has a voice, I'm sorry, Walter, I'll let you go.
This sounds to me like a coffee klatch. Why can't we, you know, once a month, you got three boards, there's some concerns, you have a meeting, it's a coffee klatch for crying out loud, you know? It's informal, it's pleasant, it's polite conversation, you present ideas, you present dislikes, you present... You know, it's a coffee klatch, what's wrong with that?
It's great. I'm just afraid that we're not going to get buy-in, right? And to me, that's my concern, I don't know if I stressed that enough. I would like to see everyone sitting around this table buy into the process, because that's the only way it's going to not become a political football. And I'm just being honest.
What's, what everyone's thoughts is, at the next, at the next meeting, each one of us takes our top three issues that we think we'd be facing this. We go through it at the next meeting, the top three, see what synergies are there together, and then decide as a group to see which ones we're going to attack first.
So we're going to warn this exact same meeting again, is what you're saying?
Yes.
That's, I just want to...
Correct.
And with the same, all three joint bodies will come and present where we think that we should start, and from there, you'll break down what we should do committee-wise?
Yes, I think everyone here is representative, right? They're elected.
No doubt.
Everybody's voice here counts.
No doubt about that.
So what Joe was saying is, is if each one of us puts down our top three that we think can really help and benefit. If we see that seven of us...
We'll put them up on a board.
All say, but this is very, this is something that's very important. Maybe that's something in the very beginning that we look to address first, and see if we go first that way. And that gives us time, right, to say, Wendy, from your board, you can say, you know what, I have these two people that are really interested in beginning the first thing. Here on Council, we've got two people, and you've got two people on Board of Finance, and then those people, with that overarching, whichever that first one or two issues are, we then can address those.
I think there's a way to flush it out, as long as, A, it's properly warned for the public, and we follow, obviously, FOIA regulations, which I know that we'll do. We acknowledge everyone's input, because they're all elected officials.
Absolutely.
But also, moving forward, I do hope that we set up a timeframe, because I think that's, it's disingenuous in a way to put out a certain timeframe that we may not know or may not be able to accomplish. And I also hope that any information that comes from these meetings and conversations for the board, as long as the information comes back to the board and we can have those discussions, that's fine. It's not up to me, I think that, I merely just brought up our policy for ad hoc, it's adopted by the boards. So if there's a way that it can be done, and everyone is at the table, I think the board would be amenable to that, as long as the protocol is followed.
So start with three topics? Whatever, top three topics, everybody on this table, everybody.
No, that wasn't what I was going to say. Wendy mentioned timeframe. We have to realize that some of this stuff is going to take months, if not a year or so.
Of course.
Especially when you're dealing with seven different bargaining units just on the board side, let alone on the Town Council side. So we have to realize that this is an open-ended process that we're doing without a...
You don't want to be rushed.
No.
You don't want to be rushed, but certain topics could be short.
Yeah.
And other topics could be long, but you realize it's open-ended.
Walter?
That's the beauty of democracy, it's very slow. Wendy, you're absolutely right.
Sorry.
It is very slow, democracy, so you've got to understand.
Anybody have their, did anybody have their hand raised over here?
Yeah.
Oh, Pete?
So, the thing that I think may work is something that worked in the Charter of Revision Commission. So that was a format, disciplined, look at the Charter, look at, and there were subcommittees all over the Charter, but it was also bound by a point of contact with legal, so that legal could review anything that was suggested.
And that may be required when you look about some of the protocols and policies in place for the Board of Finance, for the Board of Ed, for the Town Council. So if you set it up with that time component, you have a legal assigned to it, and then you can break up into the subcomponents. I know that Joe and I were on Finance, and I forgot what Diane was on, but you were on something else, but the...
I was on Administration.
Administration. So there were components of each section of the Charter that we all looked at, in small groups of four, three or four, and that format would seem to work for this activity.
It worked very, very well.
Yes.
Excellent, yeah, excellent.
Do we agree that we should come up with the top three things that we feel are, not that we want combined or worked on, but that we hope could be? I mean, let's not presuppose, right? Is that what you're thinking?
I think, yeah, kind of homework for everybody, is the next...
So back to what Brian said, right?
Come back to three things that you feel are important...
Yeah.
...to discuss at this, at this joint meeting. We'll look at those, and then the top three, those are the ones we'll look to address first, and then come up with components, that's a very good suggestion that Pete had, that we look at, kind of mimicking in a way, the, you know, we're looking at Charter of Revision... that we look at, kind of mimicking in a way, the, you know, we're looking at Charter of Division. You weren't on that too, right?
No, I wasn't. I spoke in front of the, on point and stuff, but I wasn't a member of it.
And looking at those, but I agree with you, Wendy, and agree with you, Walter. This is gonna be multi-years.
It's gonna be a long-term process, but it's funny, Mayor, when you gave some of your opening comments over the weekend, I prepped for some of the things that we do do now and that we've done over the years, and I, I won't go through the entire list, but we have a lot to be proud of. There's always work to do, and we can always do better as times change. And I think it's incumbent upon us to have that discussion and see where we can because we all benefit as a town. Even if there's not a cost savings realization in some area, to have the discussion and have an appreciation for what goes on in the town side versus the board's side is really interesting. I mean, some of these lists I went through and corrected, and there's a lot that we split now. And I've had to add to it with handwritten notes because I just started thinking about it. And I, I would hope that some of this list is turned over to the entire committee because I'm not sure if people are aware of some of these discussions.
Wendy, did you read it so that Stephanie could put it in the minutes?
I give you some of them.
That'd be great.
For example, the munis fee, the town and the board split the munis fee fifty-fifty. The board's share is sixty-four thousand, five seventy-five. And when we did munis, that was a collaborative effort. The audit fee, we split it fifty-fifty, Mayor, as you know. Our board's share is forty-three thousand, three thirteen. The SPP, health insurance, I can't give you exact numbers, but when that, we began that, we began with approximately a six or seven percent trend off of something public of twelve to thirteen percent. That's huge. Kirmah, both the town and the Board of Education, we use them jointly for workers' compensation, liability, auto, property insurance. We piggyback on the town's contracts for gasoline, recycling, refuge, heating oil, the copiers and the toner we recently were trying to drill down on. The annual joint contribution of the turf field, the turf field was fifteen years or ten years in the making. Some of us sat on all those committees. Basically, not only was that turf field accomplished, but it was accomplished with a, not a direct hit to the taxpayer, also with the commitment that we are gonna fund that turf field, so ten to twelve years out, that the town of Milford would not be hit with a surprise million-dollar bill in which, right now, we currently have four hundred and twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars in that account collectively through board and town partnership. We also had, just recently, we had a Kirmah shortfall due to the fire, and we split that. Just voted on that last week. Town, gym ceiling, helped with that, uniforms, ESG, working through that progress. The MAX, we worked on that, the renovation, the board paid for half of that component, twenty-one thousand, five ninety-eight. Those are just the financial components. There's a whole other aspect that's instruction. What the town helps with the Board of Education for initiatives, youth agency, all of those things that you can't quantify with the dollar amount, but there's many of you that volunteer for that and help. There's a real value there. So the list goes on and on, and as I said, I kept writing and writing and writing. And I personally think that the narrative that there may be a narrative that we're not working and sharing some of these, we absolutely are. And this came through years of drilling deep through what we can do. We can certainly do better. But I also will say that one of the, when we are going through COVID, the Board of Education came to you, Mayor, and said, we're gonna have an end of your balance. Would you let us work with that for setting up a COVID fund? That was over three million dollars that your bar, your body was supportive enough that that stopped a possible, a possible special appropriation to the taxpayers so we could open school. So that's a real important thing. And other districts did not care so well during that timeframe. So I have further lists. I'd be happy to type it out for you with some of my notes. But to your point, whatever is the decision, I think having more voices is appropriate as long as the data is provided. It's a long-term commitment. And we'll be happy to provide whatever information we can contractually. When you're dealing with collective bargaining, there's a lot of issues there, a lot, as you know. So that's a whole different situation. But from what I hear, you'll schedule another joint meeting for everyone. We'll come with some thoughts and ideas where we want to go and, and go from there.
Excellent.
Mr. Mayor, look around this table. Here's a large part of the leadership in the community. And you know what's happening right now? We're having polite conversation, whether we're a Democrat or a Republican. It's for the welfare of the community, and I love what's happening right now. Just a comment.
Thank you, Walter. Sure. Any other comments? Okay. Next, next. I'm sorry, Barbara.
I'm experiencing a little bit of a lack of clarity. What you're saying then is the larger groups will get together once a month, but that's in addition, or the ad hoc groups? But that's in addition to the monthly meetings of the boards? Boards will all remain discreet.
So Barbara, the next meeting will be next month?
For the larger group.
For the large group, we're asking everybody bring kind of their top three. And then Board of Finance, we'll be able to discuss this at your meeting. Town Council, Board of Ed, we regroup. And then we look at really the top three things to address in the beginning.
So these are not, not, these are in addition to the monthly board meetings?
Yes.
Because obviously, when there's a lot of people at a meeting, it becomes a lot less efficient.
And then the thought, Barbara, is once you, we determine as this body, which ones are very important, that's when we break out the smaller subgroups to work on those and bring it back to the, these full, this full board, let's just say, or boards, to address them that way.
So is there a concern then that, I don't know, I think it's a big ask to expect everybody to be a subject matter expert in a lot of different areas? Like, I feel like the people who run for Town Council are interested in what, interested in town-related things. I feel like people who are interested in budget run for Board of Finance. People who are interested in the schools run for Board of Ed. And so that's their area of expertise. I, I heard IT mentioned and personnel and that type of thing. And I agree that it does step over into areas that not everybody is a subject matter expert.
Barbara, I think one of the great advantages to this, as we all show concern, as Walter was talking about, you're seeing really the embodiment of, of the community, is we don't have the expertise, but we do have people that we could reach out to with that expertise that could inform the board and talk to the board about how that is. And we can make an analysis from that. I mean, no one's an expert in everything, but we can ask experts to come and talk to us or talk to the subcommittee. And then the subcommittees could bring back those results as well.
And I kind of, I understand what Barbara was saying about the fact that, you know, we meet every month, but we're all in the habit in our heads all these years, those of us, that it's a month or twice a month. It could be six weeks, it could be whatever, because we are gonna be into budget.
Of course.
And we are gonna have.
Of course.
Probably some new people, I don't know, maybe not, but, you know, I think it all depends on, we have to get going. And then there's the timeframe of the budget, but there's also the timeframe of talking to the person who has the expertise. Because you're right, we don't all have that. If we did, we'd probably not be sitting here. So I think it's, I think we can go outside the box of always meeting at a certain time every month or whatever, right? Yeah, because we really, you know, a lot of us have more than one meeting.
Joe?
So, once we do have, each of our, each of us have our individual three ideas, right? What's the process that we're going to use to evaluate each of those items to decide what it is that we're going to research or explore?
So I would think, and this is.
Are we gonna do like a checkbox?
Well, when we put them all on the list?
This would be just my, my thoughts, and Wendy, please, and Walter, and anyone else that's here.
Don't make off with a good idea to combine X. When we look at it, it costs X plus something to combine them. So that's where Board of Finance and the like will look, because you don't want to do that. No matter, you know, what it looks like, you don't want to have things cost more money by combining them than they do.
But, yeah, that, that was less my question. I mean, that's kind of more for like the subcommittee when you're drilling down into it. But if, if I have three and he's got three and she has three, but like, two of ours are the same, and you're like, by the time you get around the table, how are we going to say, okay, here are the best ideas that we're gonna use moving forward?
Using a consensus model, I would say, if you have a majority that's saying they're looking at, you know, how, 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 how much more would we be able to combine purchases together? How would that look? What would that look like? Is there a visibility to do that? And of this group, eighty percent voted for that. It was like the top number one. And to me, that seems like that's what we should be addressing first because that's what's on the mind of this board or these boards together. I would take a look at the top one and top two, then start looking at those. And then as we move forward, then go into the next ones, and the next ones, but address them in kind of that way.
And, and we may not know, we may not know what areas have been discussed or are currently being collaborated with. And so that list that you have, Wendy.
That's some of them.
I know, some of them. If someone can come up with a whole list, you know, an entire list, that would be very helpful.
Well, we will be talking.
I know, but to see it is.
No, I'm just saying is that if you have a list and you put down finance, IT, and then you put little chicks, how many of these and how many of these? And we end up with four things that have the most number of people.
Oh, I understand how that works.
Right, of course, but in that conversation you need here.
We'll get, we'll get those.
Okay, thank you.
Chris?
Another option that works well is weighted voting. So you put everything up there and everybody around the table gets five votes. And you can put all five on one thing, you can spread them out, and then whatever gets the most votes, the top three.
I'm actually kind of more for that, Chris, because I know I'm not the smartest guy in this room. You know, I, I'm looking at at least half a dozen people that are likely smarter than I am, and they're gonna come up with ideas that are way better than mine. You know, I don't necessarily need the three things, like, I'm not, you know, I have three ideas already. I'm holding back, you know? But, you know, but like, you know, I want to see what everyone else has to say because I might look at something and go, wow, that's, that's a brilliant idea, like, wow, you know? Let's go, let's do that, so I might.
Eric?
And for, for something like this, typically what will happen is we're gonna get a lot of ideas. What we want to do is group them together.
Right.
And then to, to establish which is the best one that we should chase after, we want to have a rate, we probably want to rate them. And there's only three things we can control, is, is how much something costs, how fast can we get it done, and how much it's gonna improve on what we're already doing. And so we can use those, you know, ease of maybe the best, highest cost impact, ease of implementation, and in performance improvement. We can maybe rank them on those three metrics, and that'll help us kind of whittle these things down to maybe what we want to attack.
And it's somewhat of an advantage if a low-lying crew is there to get something done quickly. It's not gonna take forever to, to go back and forth on.
Walter?
Joseph?
Sir?
One of the beauties about democracy is consensus, for crying out loud. And I love consensus. If you get ten people, seven of them say, this is good, then it's good. Whether, whether you're.
I'm not a big fan of the tyranny of the majority, though.
Well, majority, majority works too. Five to four, that's a majority, you know? Three to two, that's a majority. You gotta live with that because it is what it is. And that's the beauty of democracy, majority and consensus.
I, I, as much as I agree with you, my, my line of questioning or whatever, commentary or whatever it is, is more to establish the boundaries and the guardrails of this group conversation.
Oh, I got no problem with that.
Right, so, yeah, so that as we're all moving forward, we understand the rules of engagement, right? I mean, like I said, my, my big thing is I want to make sure that everybody.
Oh, that's fine.
Is heard, you know? I mean, that's, you know, one of the beautiful things about Connecticut politics is minority representation, you know? And let's make sure that everybody has a voice so that we have community buy-in because we don't want this to turn into a political football. I want the schools to get better, I want the town to save money, you know? I, I want good policy, you know, let's continue everything, moving amiably, as amiably as this conversation is.
Joseph, I have no problem with that.
Go ahead, go ahead. No, I, I.
I do appreciate the, as you mentioned, the historic nature of this gathering, right? I do ask us to consider which way the arrows go, so to speak, right? Is it, is it the takeover of the school system, you know? That's an extreme way to say that, but I, I almost feel like I have to.
Absolutely.
Yes. Or is it? I don't know.
Yeah, too many.
So how, how does it work? Is it a two-way street? Is it, you know, maybe all the HR comes to the Board of Ed?
It's a three-way street.
Can I, Joe, you brought out a really good point. It would be really unfair of me not to put on the table publicly that, and I'm not saying this is gonna happen, so Katie, I don't mean that I'm gonna be Debbie Downer here, but there could be a discussion that perhaps an initiative is brought forward and it affects the Board of Education, the Board of Education still has to vote on it. I cannot usurp any of the board's authority. So, no, I'm not, I'm just saying, I'm being clear of the process, Katie, that, that the Board of Education ultimately, we are dual agents. We're agents of the municipality and we're agents of the state, so we have different guidelines. So I wanted to be upfront about that, that if something does come before the board, we may not accept it. And I think it would be unfair of me not to put that out there. That's not to say that it will. So, yeah, I mean, basically, I, the last time that we did this, we, it doesn't matter, the last time we did it. What I'm hearing now is that we'll start off with a couple of ideas. We'll break out into some groups and you'll have someone take the minutes and some agendas, and we'll go from there. We know it's a long-term plan. And if it's anything to do with, you know, legal, I do ask that both the town and the board, you know, have way in.
Absolutely, yeah. Any other questions? Barbara?
That's a good point, the rules of engagement. What, is there any advantage to setting out before you even do anything else? Setting out the rules of engagement in terms of civil discourse and respect and letting people speak and?
So Barbara, that's a fantastic question. I think all of us here will set the example for courtesy, civility, respecting one another, especially at these meetings. They are, they are live broadcast and they will be in the vaults.
But the ad hoc committees won't be.
But I, but I think, I think we have to trust those elected officials to talk to one another and then to bring it up to the full body here and have a robust discussion. But I think with everybody here, I don't, I think everybody's here is for the right reason, right? Moving to Milford for the best that we can do. That's why we're all here.
I've been on the Board of Finance for ten years. It's very civilized. Everybody gets to speak. Everybody's ideas are considered. It's, and some of them are, you know, a little out there, but it's just fine. There's a place for everyone to contribute, and everybody is treated with civility and respect. And that's the best part of our board. But how do we make sure that that happened, that's going to happen in these ad hoc groups? Because it doesn't happen everywhere.
Pete?
So I have a question, and it goes through wrapping your arms around the process. So everyone already said a little bit about, well, legal has to redo that. Is there a budget for this process? Because there is gonna need to be some legal and someone's gonna have to pay for that legal, right? So, and I don't know if it's a Board of Ed lawyer who knows school law or it's a Town Council lawyer who knows Town Council law. How is, what's budgeted for this activity and how is that handled, I guess?
Great question, Pete. For the town side, I don't know about the board side. For the town side, we have our town attorney who's on retainer. So he would be our legal for our questions on the town side. We would ask Randy DeBella, who's our town attorney. As far as the board, I'm assuming it would be Zach. I can't speak for the board, and Wendy and Dr. Parlato, you guys would speak for them. I don't know how you'd want to address that question.
For legal, yes. We have a firm that, obviously, we have educational law, we have labor law. We have all of the above, so, but to Pete's point, there's a cost when you involve, they work off retainer. And so I personally think that, this is just me speaking, if, if we're going to go down that path, I think that you need to have attorneys weigh in. That's what they get paid to do, and I think it's. That's what they get paid to do, and I think it's worth its investment. And it also gives it some bite that we've had, you know, legal look at this, because we all have the best of intention, but we're not attorneys, so, and we're not trained in labor law or things like that. So I personally think that, you know, that would be a good idea, but it's going to incur cost, both the town side and the board side.
I guess to that point, does it make sense, as we go into our budget deliberations, to add some dollar values that everyone knows sits there as a fund, an extra contingency fund for retainer? I don't know, but, I mean, lawyers are expensive, so retainers get eaten up pretty quickly.
I know, but Pete, to your question, budgetarily, I think we should look at adding to a legal line on the town and the board side for this project, absolutely. Any other questions? Joe?
All right, so, we're all going to, we're going to have a selection process where we all come up with a bunch of ideas, right?
Yep.
Then we'll come together, right, and we'll, using some sort of a matrix or process, right, we'll come up with the top ideas, right, amongst all of us using consensus. We will then decide on a process of research, whether that's a subcommittee, bringing in experts, whatever we're going to do, right? We're all on the same page so far?
Yeah.
We will then evaluate the research that is provided back to the boards and commissions, right?
Right.
Either independently as a group or both, right? And then those things will be selected, discussed, and then accepted or rejected as they are based on, right, the Board of Education, like you're saying, certain things you may not be able to accept due to state regulations, what have you, the same side for the town.
Correct.
And we can all agree that this sounds like a fair process from the beginning?
Yes.
Yeah?
Sweet as we go.
I think it's pretty good.
Sometimes I go to the left instead of right.
I am regularly wrong.
Walter?
My question then, whatever this body comes up with, okay, still has to get approval through the individual boards, town council, Board of Ed, Board of Finance.
And clear on the rule of legal, because it may not, we may be well-intended saying this is great, but at least we can come back and say, sorry, it's just not, can't do. Eric?
And I think that plays in well with how we'll rank them at some point, assuming we're going to get a lot of ideas.
Sure.
And that might be one of the things we consider, at least qualitatively, to rank them about the feasibility. That'll come in to help us narrow down which ones we want to pursue. And I would add for the idea process too, that that process be open. No, you put the ideas down, there's no judging them at that point. There's no stupid ideas. You put them all down, because even an idea that's a little off
Absolutely.
might inspire a good idea. We want to make sure that that's, that's part of that first meeting. That's, that's important. You can have some fun with it, though.
Yep, good point.
Makes sense.
Good point. Any other discussion?
Just again, I think that we'll wait and see at the next meeting what happens and the next level, because again, our bylaws preclude us from having more than three board members on that type of participation, so let's see how it breaks out. I would also ask, we all are volunteers. We're out a lot, and I think the intent here is a collaborative one. I'm hopeful that those individuals who are gracious enough to put their names forward understand respectfully that it's a long-term assignment, and, you know, we need their attendance because we want to give this, we want to give this the due diligence it deserves. So I, I'm just, I'm, I wanted to kind of put that out there. It's a lot. So that was really it. So I, I'm more than happy, based on board policy, to wait and see what happens at the next meeting, see how you're going to do it, and then ask for boards to put their names, board members put their names forward and see who would like to do what. It's up to them. But right now, the policy precludes anything other than that.
Thank you. Barbara?
Would these ad hoc committees be able to encompass alternates, or does it have to be a sitting board member?
Be a seated member.
A seated member.
Mr. Mayor, it's been polite conversation. Motion to adjourn, sir. I take it back.
Thank you. The next is figuring out a date for the next, for the next meeting. We could go kind of take a look at our calendars and see, we're looking at December, obviously, or November, right, November?
November?
Right, next month.
November.
When do you say, Walter?
I think we should go to December.
Thanksgiving.
You go three, four weeks from now for the next meeting.
Okay.
You're at Thanksgiving week. I don't know where people is. I think the first week in December.
December.
Monday in December.
Second week?
The second week? Whatever the board, you know.
Were those, did you say it's the fourth or this?
It depends on the council if we're doing Mondays.
That's, well, it happens to be not a council.
Right, the 11th, the 11th in December.
The fourth of December?
Second Monday of month is the 11th.
What's seen weird, we know what we do on Mondays. I don't know what you all do on Mondays. I mean, you might be bowling, I don't know. The fourth was thrown out.
Yeah, the fourth is the first Monday of December, the second Monday is the 11th, which is our first meeting.
Wendy, you know?
We're not going to do November? I thought we were going to
Walter has made the thing it's, it's, you're saying
He withdrew.
Yes.
Oh, I was saying that was, we should meet as early as possible in December. I mean, you know, Wednesday is the first of November. Wait four weeks, we're into Thanksgiving holiday, you know, season, and I think we should wait that following week, first week, or, you know, I think the 28th.
That's a Monday, no?
Yeah, first week in December is begins with that month, you know.
Once everybody starts on the 4th of December.
I can't do the 4th.
December 4th?
The 4th.
The 27th.
I'm good.
Going once.
The 4th is fine.
Fourth?
Well?
Hillary? Brian?
Wendy?
The 4th of December, Monday. Joe? Joe?
Dr. Parlato? Wendy?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so we'll do the 4th for our next meeting.
And what time, Mayor?
7:00.
And this will be everyone here?
Yes. Yep.
To bring topics for subcommittees.
Correct.
Are you in motion for that? Is this possible action, a motion?
So
Can we make a motion? Can you make a motion?
I'd like to move that we call this group together on the 4th of December at 7:00 PM.
Second.
Motion is second. Any other discussion on the motion? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you.
One question, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Before we adjourn, would people be able to call in if they couldn't make that meeting? Will we set up a phone like we do for the council so they can hear what's
That's up to the group.
I know, bring it
Are we okay with people calling on the phone, or you want them in person?
You got to open it up.
Huh?
You got to open up the flexibility of people's schedules.
Yeah, I think so.
Would it be possible virtual instead of a phone? You know, people come in on Zoom?
We don't do that. No, we don't. We can't do that here.
Through the system there.
Mike's
No, okay. Be phone. All right. So we had the motion. We're going to be doing it on December 3rd.
Fourth.
Sorry.
Walter. For the third time, Mr. Mayor, a motion to adjourn.
Any discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, everybody. Thank you for coming tonight. Wendy?